With their sewer interceptor replacement project, Stormwater Authority would pay two-thirds, the municipal authority would pay one-third of the wall replacement costs. So that's kind of how we landed with our discussion with the manager. Mike and John were both there for that discussion, and I boiled that two-thirds and one-third down that they landed in the funding section, item number six, funding, is where it says the one-third for GMA and two-thirds for the Stormwater Authority. The way that we're anticipating that this is going to work is that...
It's all seen people paying these bills.
Bucart has already provided us with the survey, which was really pretty all-inclusive survey, so we don't have to add too much to it. But following that, then, the Stormwater Authority would employ C.S. Davidson to complete the design of the wall and get it permitted. At that point, we would hand that design and permit to Bucart Horn, who was doing the advertising and bidding for the municipal authority. They would administer the contract through their sewer interceptor replacement, and this would be a pay item in their sewer replacement contract. And then, I'm not sure exactly how that invoicing would happen then from the sewer authority to the Stormwater Authority, but they would essentially invoice you for two-thirds of the cost of that nine item once the contractor completes it and asks for payment of it. Then during construction, the only thing we would be involved with, aside from making that payment, obviously, is reviewing shop drawings and inspections during construction. So we would have, there's a bang for the buck, you know, of cost savings and allowing them to do all of that contract administration, which is part of the municipal bidding law that we would have to do otherwise.
Oh, yeah, the overhead. And you will be specing out what this wall will look like?
Yeah, and we had some conversations back and forth about what we think the best way to do this. We still think that the preferred method is going to be a gravity wall system because we think it's going to be around that six-foot height, which is perfect for gravity wall systems without having to do a lot of tiebacks. As soon as you do anything else, you've got to do tiebacks and things into the alley, which is going to be a conflict with all the other utilities that are in there, the water and sewer and gas that are in that alley. So we think that the gravity wall system is going to be the best bang for the buck. The one component that we don't have figured out yet with the design is the top of the wall is going to need to have some type of a railing system. It's going to, there's an alley there, so it'll have to be able to withstand vehicle traffic, so we're anticipating some type of a guide rail system. But of course, we have that little caveat that we want to be able to keep a piece that's removable so that we can clean the stream out. So that part of it, whenever you have a guide rail going into a gravity wall system, then the gravity wall system isn't really a gravity wall anymore. It's kind of a retaining wall, it needs to be reinforced. So that's the part that we're still trying to figure out. You know, our structural engineers will figure that part of it out, but that'll go into the design. There is two inlets along the back of that wall, too, that we'll be replacing at the same time with associated piping, and we're going to have GMA reshape the alley so that the water isn't running against the back of the wall whenever they repave the alley. That's one little point of, you know, it's a specific item in there that, under the funding, the last sentence has said that the GMA has the full cost of paving the alley. They would always had that cost with their interceptor projects, so...
I'm glad you added that because I think that alley is really going to be a bear. I think they're going to find out all sorts of things when they dig through that.
The possibility is definitely there.
I know. I mean, just the way it looks now and as it's settled through the years, it doesn't look good, but that's just my two cents.
So this is a first draft of this thing. I think the question that I would have here, and I wanted to have some discussion on this, and maybe the solicitor can help us navigate this as well, just like we did with the last MOU. So the last one, we kind of needed to get that approved because of the tree's imminent failure.
We have time here.
This one, I believe we have some time, except for we need to get that permit underway. So what I would suggest, and what I put in the motion for the agenda here, is that really alls we need now is to get moving with the design and permitting. And then we can have some time to see what, Mark's going to take this also to his board to see what they think about the one-third part of that expense, have a chance for you all to review what I just handed you, and then maybe next month, have a finalized version of this MOU that's ready for adoption. So tonight, it's just kind of, this is a draft to get the discussion started, and really, like I said, anything we need to get started on that's a critical path or schedule is the design permitting.
And what do you think, right now, your cost would be?
So we asked, our structural engineers estimated the design cost about $35,000 and the construction at about $200,000. So if you would authorize this motion that's on your agenda tonight, you'd be committing to that $35,000.
This is a cost not to exceed?
That was an estimate. But I think it's got enough in it because...
Time and materials, what are we, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I think, well, typically, we do our work on a time and material basis.
It's time and knowledge.
Computer time, very expensive.
Very shrewd.
Yeah. And I think that that number is pretty safe because we have Bucart Horn doing a heavy part of the lifting in terms of the bidding and contract administration, which, as you know, that can tie up a lot of times. Hopefully, the design shouldn't take us, I have a feeling that that's a pretty safe number, that $35,000.
Good, we'll remember that.
Yeah.
Questions?
Just comment that the engineer from Bucart Horn didn't really balk at any of the comments at that meeting, so hopefully, the GMA board feels as strongly as we do, and I think Mark's on board, so I think we're good to go.
It was a good meeting. There was no contentiousness or anything like that, and, you know... The citizens of Gettysburg are paying for this one way or the other.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the bottom line, but we want it to be as cost-effective as we can, both organizations, and it felt the same for GMA. They felt the same.
They volunteered the drafting.
Yeah.
The survey work.
Right, and they already sent you... A lot of the detail, right?
Yeah. It was a great meeting, huh?
And at the end of the day, it's still our wall, so we would have to replace it one way or the other, so...
Yeah.
Without their one-third expense, we would have 100% of it.
Absolutely.
And also, at the end of the day, you know, I don't believe they can complete their project without some of that wall falling in.
I agree.
It would be a headache, it's going to be a significant headache taken off of their plate by having it just be a brand-new wall at the end of the day, and their contractor's really going to appreciate that, so. It really is a mutually beneficial project here, and the two-thirds and the one-thirds that John and Mike helped negotiate, I think, makes a lot of sense to me.
Sweet. Very good.
So for the two-thirds that we have, it's two-thirds of the total cost, all the engineering permitting, construction?
It's all of C.S. Davidson's cost and two-thirds of the construction cost.
Okay.
They are paying one-third of the construction cost and all of Bucart Horn's cost for survey, contract administration, those kind of things.
We came up with that fat, figuring if they dig alongside that wall, probably only the top portion is going to fall in, the whole wall's not going to fall in, it's just going to be the top portion that's going to make a hell of a mess for everybody. And so we figured, well, if that's going to be the disruptive part, you know, let's split this one-third and two-thirds and...
Yeah, when we discussed this last meeting, I was just seeking clarity, which I think we achieved, it looks like.
Hopefully, the GMA board agrees.
Yeah. Hopefully.
So the only other variable is that we do have, at large, a grant application in for the flood mitigation.
That's right, thank you.
Flood mitigation. That's actually on, there's a resolution of a Borough Council's agenda tonight. We originally applied back in December for a small water H2O grant. It didn't fit that grant source, but it did fit the flood mitigation source, so they were able to, both through DCD, they were able to take that grant application, shift it over to the flood mitigation. So we're hoping that still, that there's some funding coming for not just that wall, that's a $420-some thousand is the number, I can't remember the exact number, but it's over $400,000, which, as I just said, our wall is, I believe, around $200,000 in Bream Alley, so we should have plenty of money to do Bream Alley and some other work on some other walls if we would get that grant.
That's right.
But we don't want to wait on that, there's a chicken-and-egg thing, we don't want to wait on that. We're not going to know if we get that grant until about July. At that point, it would be too late to get into GMA's bidding package. So we want to go ahead and at least get this thing designed and permitted and into GMA's bidding package, and then should we come into some money, then we can use that money to pay for it instead of the money we talked about earlier on our agenda.
That's right.
Yeah, because it's still our wall, and we're still going to end up doing the design anyhow, so...
Yep. It was one of those things where we did literally change horses in midstream with this grant.
Pun intended.
Yeah, pun intended. The motion in front of us right now, if there are no other questions or comments, the motion is to authorize C.S. Davidson to begin design and permitting for the Bream Alley channel wall project, and we know, and this should be in the record, too, Karen, that the estimate is not to exceed $35,000. And hopefully, we'll put that in motion.
Don't say that. Write that down.
Okay. Any other questions? No, not hearing anything. Someone like to make a motion to accept this motion that I just read?
I'm moved.
Thank you, John, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Not hearing any, it passes, thank you very much. And Chad, you're on again.
So this is just a real quick update on a cross-run stream restoration, as we discussed earlier in the agenda here, the project's essentially complete, but we do need to get land studies back to do some spraying of invasives as they pop up and monitor the stream, make sure there's no erosion or major issues. There's reporting requirements for, there's a two-year reporting requirement and then a four-year reporting requirement for DEP. There's two different levels there that have to have annual reports, so land studies would do those as well. Originally, their estimate to do all of that work was close to $19,000, they came back at just over $10,000, you guys authorized that last month, and then since then, there had been some more discussion with the National Park Service in which they were suggesting that maybe they could take over some of that spraying of invasives as we move forward. So that might even help us a little bit more. At this point, we're under contract with land studies, they're going to read from land studies, responded, said, yeah, absolutely, if the National Park Service wants to take that responsibility over, we'd be happy to hand it to them. So there's going to be some coaching for the first year, land studies is going to be out there anyways. I expect that we'll spend most of that contract that we have in place with land studies this year, but in future years, it could be down to just the reporting. They're going to come out, make sure that the National Park Service is doing the spraying, do the reporting, so I was really excited to see that. National Park Service has, again, been a great partner to the Stormwater Authority here for this project, and land studies has been great to work with in terms of willing to try to help keep our costs down, so. I just wanted to give you an update on that, nothing that you guys need to do in terms of any motions or anything at this point, so...
But I do have a comment, because I just recently walked the whole thing, and how do I, the first 100 yards from the road is probably my biggest concern, because there's, I say this because I'm knowledgeable about bald spots, there's a bald spot about in the first 100 yards on the way down. The next 600 yards is beautiful, all the way down to the sewer plant, but there's some plugs that I don't think took, and I think they should look at that. And I think it's a velocity issue, coming out under the road, yeah, that first 100 yards is the toughest.
When you're talking about the stream that comes out from the culvert pipe from the school, not the tributary.
Right, not the tributary, the tributary looks good, but that first 100 yards is, I think, a little problematic, and those plugs, I think, suffered from velocity issues. And speaking about the school, the trees have grown up, you know, the pipe exits and then it's, there's an opening until it goes under, it's East Confederate Avenue, wouldn't that be? So there's a section that's maybe as long as this room, and now it's all chock-full of trees, not the stream bed itself, but the banks, and it's getting to the point where somebody ought to look at that. And I think we need to have trees there, I think that would be helpful, but it may need to be thinned down, and I don't know whether that's us, because I assume that's the school property. Were it exits, Chad?
Yeah, so it's probably...
Yeah.
It's...
But it's in our stream.
It's going to be close, so it's right between the National Park Service's road and our road, but I'm not sure if it's National Park Service property or school property, that piece you're talking about.
Right.
Have you ever cleaned it? I know what you're talking about, it is starting to grow up there.
Yeah, it's starting to grow up, and it should be addressed now before it gets a lot worse, because, you know, some of those trees are like 20 feet high.
What's the concern with the trees?
It's just too many of them. I mean, the whole thing, it's, you couldn't get, it's hard to get down in there if you needed to get down in there, and I would think you would want it more accessible. And there's brush growing up, and this is early, I mean, this is, so if that's not a problem, then I don't want to create more work for somebody, but somebody ought to look at it.
I mean, accessibility is one potential concern, the other concern would be if those trees are obstructing flow to the point where the pipe is...
I don't think so. I don't think it's a flow issue, I think it's trying to keep...
More accessibility.
Yeah. Just to look at it.
Look at it, but I said before, I thought we should have trees planted.
All the way down the run.
I'm not, haven't given up on that.
You have to convince the park service.
But, yeah, I understand that, so that is my point, if the park service doesn't have a problem, I don't see why we'd have a problem.
Yeah.
And if the park service has a problem, they should cut them.
If we get somebody to cut them and thin out and so forth.
I'll say this, the Watershed Alliance is going to give away 10,000 trees here in the next week and a half, and we'll undoubtedly have trees left over, so if you need trees, yeah, let me know. Doesn't sound like you need them, but if you do...
Can't put them in here.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Not hearing any, we'll move to new business, we don't have any new business on the agenda. Public comment? There is no public, no comment. I am seeking a motion for adjournment.
Show me.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is over, thank you very much.
Evening and welcome to our April council meeting. If everyone please rise for a moment of silence in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. An executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting. It's consistent with section 708A1 and section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes: one, to discuss matters involving the employment, the terms and conditions of employment of borough employees; and two, to review and discuss matters of borough business which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. That takes us to the approval of the agenda and the minutes. Have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments about the agenda for this evening? Not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that takes us to our minutes. Now, we have minutes for the council meeting of March 13, 2023, the special meeting for the purposes of modifying the civil service rules that was held on March 27th, the public hearing for the zoning event venue ordinance amendment, which was held March 27th, the public hearing for the zoning map amendment, which deals with the parcels in Colt Park of March 27th, and the work session of March 27th. Before we have that motion, are there any known modifications to any of those minutes?
So moved.
All right, not yet so moved. A second for approval of the minutes?
Second.
Okay, we motioned a second. Any questions or comments about our minutes for those sessions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that'll take us to public comment. All right, please note that the public comment, pardon me, the first public comment session is limited to those items on the agenda. Please use the podium, provide your name and address, and limit yourself to five minutes. Yes, sir? You'd like to make public comment?
Yes, I would.
Yep, if you could please use the podium, that just helps because we have the microphone there for the, uh, the Yep, if you could please use the podium, that just helps because we have the microphone there for the folks at home that see the meeting recorded.
My name is Russell C. Alpie. I live at 1315 Knoxville-Dortana Road, although I spend most of my time in Gettysburg, not in Ortana, as you can understand. A little bit about myself, I'm a Marine. You're always a Marine. I spent four years on active duty in the Marine Corps. Then I eventually went into the Army National Guard, became a helicopter pilot, and retired as a lieutenant colonel, as a brigade executive officer in an aviation brigade. Additionally, I was a police sergeant on a small police department with 80 officers and about 20 civilian employees. I was a direct supervisor for six police officers, records, and dispatchers. The reason I came here to talk, I read recently about some editorials about some kind of a, something against a proposal to prohibit an event at a home on High Street. The reason I'm familiar with that, we've been coming here since 1990, and I love the arch check here, and that home there on High Street should be on a postcard, say, "Come to Gettysburg, it's so nice and so well-kept." Anyway, the articles went on to talk about how this and that should not happen here. So I looked into it a little bit and looked at the proposal, and it seems like the proposal has, unless it's changed, because this has been a long time, I understand, that is limited to a certain number of people, okay, and you're sure you're familiar with that. It talks about a timeframe that things would end probably around 10 o'clock at night, and then another hour to clean up. Now, knowing how well that property is kept, there's no doubt in my mind that the owner would maintain the peace and tranquility in that neighborhood, and if it wasn't, there's a guy to my right that would make sure it was done. So anyway, having said all that, looking at the proposal, looking at the editorials, which I can't believe were printed, they're pure fiction. They ought to get a hold of Stephen King. There's a problem with the way they propose or talk about things there. Also, as a police officer, one of my jobs was in community affairs, and I had seen where, on some occasions, very seldom, I was a police officer in Jackson Township in New Jersey, about 40,000, 50,000 residents, where township administrators or township committeemen would continue to postpone unpopular proposals, because some wanted to vote for it, some didn't want to vote for it, and they didn't want their name on it. So they would put it off so long that eventually the person, the applicant, got tired, wore out, or ran out of money, and that was the end of it. It would seem as long as this proposal has been going on, you folks would have something better to do than work on that one thing. It looks to me like some of it dates back eight, 10 months, a year. Something better to do that would benefit the township more than do that. Anyway, I would hope you would pass it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Public comment? All right, seeing no further public comment, we'll go on to, pardon me. Okay, folks, you need to, we have this exercise where we try to go last. Okay. Thinking of the work session, I had that. Appreciate that. All right, thank you.
I'm Susan Sipperly. I live at 314 North Stratton Street in Gettysburg, and talking about the event venue, at the March 27, 2003 work session, there was little discussion of the comments made during the public hearing held earlier in the evening. No one really considered recommendations from the Borough Planning Commission, despite the PC chairman presenting them in person and being available for questions. Notably absent was any reference to the comments legally required by the Adams County Office of Planning and Development. A copy is provided for the record, and excerpts are used within these comments. The planning office said, "Allowing event venues in this setting that do not support the sense of place or neighborhood, and that do not directly benefit the residents in the district, would not be consistent with the purpose of the Elm Street overlay." Also, the amendment implies that residential areas in the community that are generally lower income, lower proportion of homeownership, and more racially diverse are where it is acceptable for the potential impacts of such event uses. Planning questioned whether this is equitable when the broader population is not act to do the same. We especially discourage allowing event venues in residential districts and within the Elm Street overlay district. The Elm Street plan is intended to benefit the borough's minority and low-income neighborhoods. In summary, ACOPD said, "We cannot support the current amendment as proposed. We especially discourage allowing event venues in residential districts and within the Elm Street overlay district." "We encourage the borough to propose an amendment that is consistent with current planning policy, especially the Elm Street plan that is intended to benefit the borough's minority and low-income neighborhoods." They advised against deleting the 2,000-square-foot maximum for non-residential structures in the residential portion of the Elm Street overlay. This standard serves the purpose of retaining residential uses and promoting small, community-centered, commercial, and institutional activities. Removing this standard could ultimately be detrimental to not only the purpose, but the character of the Elm Street overlay district and the neighborhoods within by allowing larger-scale structures and uses. During the past year, this section was not discussed after, you guys, about a year ago, initially agreeing to leave it intact for the zoning hearing board to address if needed. Now it's the least and is in the ordinance. No reason has been given. This was meant to allow a restaurant, for example, but not a typical fast food or sit-down restaurant in the R2 residential part of Elm Street. It needs to be retained. The footprint of buildings in the vicinity of the South Washington-High Street intersection in the R2 zone are approximately 2,000 square feet or less, as measured on the Adams County GIS site. There's a few of them listed there that are sort of 1,400 feet to 2,000 square feet. This is characteristic for the R2 neighborhood, so why change it? This could inspire removing buildings and inserting new, larger structures. Also, your supplemental regulations. If you look at number one on the actual ordinance, it says, "Minimum parcel size of .5 acres if there are to be any outdoor components to the accessory activities associated with the use." Well, just recently realized that that means that if you are only having inside activities, you don't need .5 acres, if you read it as written. So you could have more than one, you could have several. So that's one. Noise could still be an issue, as could parking, traffic, and neighborhood safety. Requirement number two was noted by the planning, county planning is not specifying the number of days per week, month, or year events are allowed to be held. Events could be held every single day, which would not be appropriate in residential areas. Requirement three was noted as allowing virtually continuous tent installation, which would technically permit outdoor tents to remain standing at all times. They recommended that the frequency of events and the staging of tents be revisited. I just want to say the county planning office are an outside agency with professional planning staff, and I think that you should take their advice, and also that you should fix the current draft before proceeding, or leave this major change to the rezoning effort that's coming up. To proceed would be a disservice to all seven districts involved, especially the Elm Street overlay. There should be greater agreement on something of this magnitude than a 4-3 vote. Thank you.
Public comment?
My name is Rosemary Maher. I live at 44 West High Street. I'm not going to repeat all the questions that I've asked over the past year plus. It seemed like we were adding restrictions to make it a little more palatable to the neighbors, to events per month, for instance. But I do have a couple of questions that need a response. We discussed the event venue over a period of several months, and were presented the summation of that plan in September of 2022 at the Borough Council meeting. The project was put on hold for several months due to other priorities of the borough, budgets, holiday, et cetera. Between September 2022 and January of 2023, major revisions in the document took place. The plan went from a somewhat reasonable list of restrictions due to the location of the property, of the project, in a very densely populated area, to no more restrictions than those that are required by the borough on Steinmore Avenue. What happened? Over and over, we hear the excuse of the churches on West High Street as a justification for outdoor events. I've yet to hear noise from attendees of weddings and funerals entering, either entering the churches or leaving them. As far as outdoor venues, take a look. They have no yards to facilitate that type of entertainment. If they have a funeral on a workday, or if there's a large crowd expected, the funeral directors park the cars and close the metered parking for the morning. It's well organized and may last a better part of the morning, and they leave quietly. This does not occur very often. If the funeral or wedding occurs on the weekend, the churches own the parking lot, so they don't need to block the street. Adams County Office of Planning and Development spent time reviewing the project and presented their view of the events venue. They were not in favor of it occurring in this densely populated area of the borough and determined it wasn't fair to the residents. Why was their view not addressed at the Borough Work Session last month? It was never brought up. Did everyone read it? The planning commission's suggestions were not incorporated either. I have heard over and over that this project will be good for the neighborhood, but no one has been specific as to how that, what that good thing is. Tell us. And why is Colt Park, a neighborhood of single-family homes, being protected, and a densely populated neighborhood is not? Where are war groups on the subject of protecting our neighborhood? Thank you.
Public comment?
Mandy Day, 142 West High Street. Mr. English recently submitted in a letter to the editor in the Gettysburg Times, saying that he had 500 people at his property in October with no complaints. I agree, and I commend him. However, there was no tent on the lawn, no dancing or frolicking in the grass, no band or BJ playing the marcellana or the chicken dance, no bottles or trash blowing about, no poop in the porti-potties. Why? Because, again, I'll quote from him, "I invoked the ghost tours in from the sidewalk. The event was held inside. The weddings and funerals at the churches take place inside. The lawyers counsel inside. The soup kitchen feeds the people inside. We have no complaint about the operation of a bed and breakfast and what happens inside those walls." You may also have seen posted for the last couple of months, a lot-for-sale sign for the area of ground intended outside for the venue. This has not been addressed here by Mr. English or by the council. If this is a serious action, isn't this whole discussion a waste of time for a venue space? Or has it been posted as a ploy or a threat for some purpose? Which of these choices is an example of the good faith that he has for the community? Why has this not been addressed? Gettysburg is a town, a town with a battlefield, a town with neighborhoods. You buy a house near the train tracks, you're going to hear a train rumbling by and train whistles. I bought near the hospital, I hear ambulance sirens and medevac helicopters. They were expected. They were part of the neighborhood that we moved into. But to throw in this venue in our neighborhood would be like throwing a biker bar next to the community theater. It might be profitable, but it wouldn't be a very good idea. Change can be good, but not when it is a disruption and discriminating. Gettysburg may be a tourist town, but it is a town first. A tourist may come and buy a pocketbook or two, but you need to protect the town's core, the people who live here, the people who don't, you need to speak up for the town, so that it doesn't disappear into shops and hotels. Please speak up for the town. Thank you.
Public comment?
Good evening. My name is Scott English, business owner, 6668 West High Street, the Gettysburg Academy, applicant for the Event Venue Zoning Text Amendment, and I support the current draft of the amendment, and request that you advertise the ordinance. I remember across Washington Street was Hanky Brothers Grocery Store, Calvin's Barber Shop, and on down Washington Street was the car repair shop, the used car lot next to the alley with the cars parked out on the sidewalk of Washington Street, and Lawyers Row across High Street. The Gettysburg Academy building was constructed as Adams County's first public school, never intended to be a residence. It's been a residence periodically from time to time. It served as Adams County's first public school, the first home for the Lutheran Seminary, the first home to the Gettysburg College, the Easter Female Academy, and as the tourist home motel for 15 years during the 1930s, 1940s, and 1950s. This isn't a walk down memory lane, but is the reality of Ward III. That's how Ward III was, a mixed-use neighborhood historically. Eighty-eight percent of the 425 feet from Baltimore Street to Washington Street on the even side, eighty-eight percent is institutional or commercial, eighty-eight percent of that side of the street. The other side of the street is zoned old town. Let's look at what the borough already permits it by right in the Elm Street District. Uses include restaurants, cultural centers, beds and breakfasts, museums, historical interpretive facilities, daycare facilities, to name a few of the 22 non-residential uses permitted by right in the Elm Street District. I'm not asking for anything different. I'm asking for a use similar to those proposed that are existed by right in my amendment. The stated objective of the Elm Street overlay district is to serve as a transition zone between the borough's downtown and surrounding mixed-use residential and commercial areas. The Gettysburg Elm Street Plan prepared by Dirk and Edson, one of the identified strategies in that plan was for Elm Street area to increase mixed-use development with the neighborhood to create sustained level of activity within the neighborhood. The proposed zoning text amendment has fostered that goal for the past 16 months and over 35 public meetings. As further evidence of the purpose of the Elm Street overlay district, the Gettysburg Borough Elm Street Mission Statement includes a promotion of, quote, "New business and expansion of existing businesses." The key goal of the Elm Street overlay district was noted by the borough's former Elm Street manager. Unfortunately, two advisory elements, the planning commission and Adams County Office of Planning, appear not to have considered the Central Adams County Joint Comprehensive Plan of 2019, I'll call that the PLAN, in developing their comments regarding the zoning text amendment. Had either included such consideration, they would have noted that a portion of the properties located in the Elm Street overlay district are intended to be rezoned to be within what's called the downtown core area and the neighborhood mixed-use area. This planned zoning designation is in the future land use map of the PLAN. As stated, the PLAN Downtown Core is a historic heart of the borough and is the site of commercial, civic, office, and residential uses. As the comprehensive plan notes, these uses often occur within a single property or building. Properties in this area are meant to be used efficiently while, quote, "Promoting creative reuse or redevelopment projects." The PLAN provides that flexibility, that, quote, "Flexibility should provided in terms of the use of buildings and the mixture of neighborhood-oriented residential and non-residential uses should be encouraged." These are in the PLAN. In the downtown core, quote, "Efforts should focus on ensuring that existing properties are used in the most efficient means possible." The county review lacks consideration of the PLAN. They didn't even look at it. I don't even think they read it, which should be the guiding document for the review of any zoning amendment. The county review fails to note that not only does the Elm Street overlay district include portions of the existing Old Town District, but also includes the expanded downtown core and neighborhood mixed-use area as delineated in the PLAN. The county review also includes incorrect assertions regarding special exceptions as standards. The county review is purely advisory. The county review was prepared in the absence of being present at any of the robust discussions. The county review was prepared in the absence of being present at any of the robust discussions that this Borough Council, citizens, residents, and business owners of Gettysburg have engaged in regarding the amendment over the past 16 months and 35 public meetings. Let's use and follow both of these taxpayer-funded, reviewed, and adopted plans, plans that cost tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxpayer money and took years of time to coordinate with the public to finalize. These have been staffed and coordinated with the public. I'm not making this stuff up. This Borough Council, Mayor, Police Chief, Borough Staff, and Mr. Eastman have worked tirelessly over the past 16 months and 35 public meetings, addressing public comment and crafting the current ordinance. Please advertise it. Thank you again for your time and dedication to the borough of Gettysburg.
Public comment. Okay, not seeing any further public comment, we will go on to current and old business, beginning with our Planning Department. Ms. Marshall.
Hello, I'm Ms. Reports, and I do want to just note that the next Planning Commission meeting is Monday, April 17th at 7:00 PM. We have no subdivision to land development plans on the agenda, but we will likely be discussing the rezoning effort. And then there's also a zoning hearing scheduled for Wednesday, April 26th at 7:00 PM for a variance for two vacation rental uses on one property. You have two motions on your agenda from my department, the first relating to the zoning map amendment, reclassifying 49 parcels located adjacent to the northwestern side of John's Ave. and the southeastern side of Highland Ave. to be rezoned from tourist commercial to the R1 district, and the motion to authorize the finalization and publication for the enactment of the Gettysburg Borough zoning ordinance for the amendment for the purposes of establishing and regulating the event venue use within the borough of Gettysburg.
Are there any questions for Ms. Marshall that are not related to these motions? Seeing none, we proceed with the motion for the zoning map amendment, and then we'll have discussion if needed.
I'll make a motion to authorize the finalization and the publication for intended enactment of a proposed ordinance amending the Gettysburg Borough zoning ordinance and amending the official zoning map of Gettysburg Borough for the purpose of rezoning and reclassifying 49 parcels of real property located along and adjacent to the northwestern side of John's Ave. and the southeastern side of Highland Ave. by removing said parcels of real property from the tourist commercial district and by adding the same to an adjoining low-density residential R1 district.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions and comments related to the zoning map amendment? Seeing none, Ms. I'd like a roll call on both of these motions, please.
Mr. Berger.
Aye.
Mrs. Butterfield.
Aye.
Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Ms. Lawson.
Aye.
Mr. Lover.
Aye.
Mr. Moon.
Aye.
Mr. Heiser.
Aye.
All gay votes.
And then that takes us to the zoning text amendment, where we have discussion. Yes, thank you.
I'll make a motion to authorize the finalization and the publication for intended enactment of a proposed ordinance amending the text of the Gettysburg Borough zoning ordinance for the purpose of establishing and regulating event venue uses within the borough of Gettysburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions and comments? Ms. Butterfield.
I know Solicitor Eastman is tired of explaining this, but would you please, again, explain what this vote tonight is doing and not doing?
We are now at that critical point. We, the Borough Council has gone through an extensive process of review, revision, more revision amendments of the proposed ordinance. The requirements of the municipality's planning code have been completed, I mean, for you to be able to vote on whether to proceed under the Borough Code with the enactment of this ordinance. Thus, that the ordinance was discussed or the subject of a public hearing, which was conducted in March. Also, it was submitted to the Adams County Office of Planning and Development for recommendation, along with our Planning Commission for recommendation, also both required under the municipality's planning code. Completed all of the procedures required under the municipality's planning code. Now, this action is actually consistent with the provisions of the Borough Code, which mandates that before you take any formal action, legislative action in terms of enacting an ordinance, that you would cause that to be, or proceed with the publication of that ordinance prior to taking formal action. This motion is intended, as written, to direct that the version of the ordinance that was the subject of the public hearing be published for enactment that would occur if the motion passes at the May Borough Council meeting.
So again, this is to proceed with the procedure?
Proceed with the procedure. That is correct. This is not a final vote.
Ms. Eastman, I hate to bother you again. That's what we pay you for. So, the Adams County Office of Planning and Development, I don't know if you had a chance to read this letter from March 21st, 2023. Event use definition, we offer the following comments regarding the proposed definition for event venue use. We feel the definition as proposed could benefit from including additional clarifying language. It is not fully clear whether this use would include those events/venues frequently held/used by certain institutions in the borough. For example, would this include certain venues used by schools and colleges in the borough, the park, the hospital to hold events? Are these types of institutional uses to be included in this definition or impacted by these standards at all? Or are they included under the definition of commercial auditorium? Some additional clarification could potentially be provided to make clear whether these uses included or excluded from the proposed standards. Basically, what I'm, my biggest question here is, would this zoning ordinance change, do you see what they're asking? Is this an effect to current already event uses? Is this affecting, for example, the park, the hospital, and whenever they want to have an event on their property?
I don't believe so. I believe, I mean, the definition was worked on and not just by myself, but I believe that the definition does not require any further clarification in that regard, and the confusion that they raised is not, is not really an issue that should stop you. But again, that's, you folks are the ones who are legislating.
Sure.
And if you believe that there is a true issue there, then you certainly.
Well, clearly, they do. But it was sad that they weren't at the workshops over the year that we held to bring that seemingly important issue at hand to us to consider before now. So I guess I'm just asking, because of their definition use, event venue versus commercial auditorium, and how is that affecting our already existing event venues in the borough? Or does it not?
I believe that this has been very clearly a process and procedure for the introduction of a, of a use that has not existed under our zoning ordinance. So it would be my full belief and understanding that the definition is for a new use. I mean, there could be, I don't know whether or not there truly have been event venue uses that are in existence, but it's clearly for a new use to be established in the borough, not to be confused with other uses or, let us say, possibly uses that are accessory to other uses.
Thank you.
Very key portion.
Questions and comments?
I'll make one final comment because the Elm Street program has been mentioned several times from both those that are for and those that are against. And I know it's been mentioned in public comment about the previous manager for the Elm Street program, Stephanie McHewling. And yes, I read that full letter from her, and she says that that is exactly what this program was about. And that key goal, as Mr. English said, of Elm Street Overlay District was noted by that former Elm Street manager. In fact, in the mission statement, as he said, includes a promotion of new business and expansion of existing businesses. I just, I just have to, before we take the vote on this, and I know, again, it's just to advertise it, but I just want to state my feeling on this. Shops and hotels, frankly, are just as important as residents. We are in a tourist town. Whether you like it or not, Gettysburg is a tourist town. Sometimes I love it and sometimes I don't, the tourist town that it is, but it is that. And I think it's very important to recognize that we thrive on, that is one thing that brings people here, and yes, we have a lot of lovely residents. I love you as much as the small businesses that are here, but they're a part of the town too, and they pay certain taxes as well. And if we continue to let buildings that are historic, that were here long before we sit empty or not being used to their fullest extent to encourage even more of a vibrant town, then we're not doing our due diligence and justice to the historic town that we live in. Thank you.
Okay. May I?
Yes.
I'm not going to read the rest of this that you didn't cover there. The county's, the county planning assessment of the application is pretty damning. It talks at length about how this application is not in line with the original intent of the Elm Street project. I don't really want to rehash that, though, but I do want to say is that both the career professionals at the county, as well as our own planning commission, are advising a more restrictive approach to this. I think we had done some really hard work last year, and we came up with a compromise model that minimized the impact on the residential neighborhood, and it is a residential neighborhood. Under that overlay, it is R2. There have been a lot of, people have said some pretty inflammatory things throughout this process. There have been accusations, I don't believe rightly, as to the ethical standards of our staff. I think those complaints were completely unfounded and unrealistic. There have been accusations that there were secret machinations amongst my four colleagues who are in favor of this, and that is not the case either. This council does everything right here at this table. There are very few things in municipal government that are going to upset people as much as planning and zoning and telling us what we can and cannot do with our properties. At one point in this process, the question was asked by Mr. Lover, who are we to tell people what they can and cannot do with our properties? Well, it's, it's kind of our job. We do it all the time. The last time we discussed this, it was brought up that I had, at the behest of at least a dozen of my constituents, brought up the subject of backyard poultry. And it was indicated that that application was out of touch with reality in some way. It was something that was asked for, so we brought it up for discussion. The rest of council did not seem interested in it, so that issue is gone. That's what we do. We debate stuff, and we come up with what you can do and what you can't do. I strongly encourage my colleagues to think about this. We had the compromise model in September, October, November. It had the mechanisms in it with the management plan that would be annually reviewed by Ms. Marshall's office. It had the special exceptions that our own planning department is recommending as opposed to the by-right use. And it is noteworthy that in the seven zones we are talking about adding this use to, most of them would be special exception, but just this one is by-right. And I don't understand that disconnect. I don't understand why it was so easy for us to say, of course, we must protect residential housing inventory in Colt Park. Of course we do. There was no debate about that. And in the same breath, we do not have that same concern for this specific section of the Third Ward. And I don't understand why that's coming in. So I think you all know where I stand on this. I'm just asking you all to proceed with caution. I have no doubt that the Englishes would be excellent stewards of that property moving forward, should this application be passed. I don't doubt that at all. But someday, they'll sell it to somebody else. Do we know that that person is going to be a good steward who respects the residents of South Washington and South Street and the Third Ward? I don't know. We don't know the future. I just recommend we proceed with caution on this. Thank you.
Questions and comments?
I'd like to make a comment if I can. First of all, I want to thank my colleagues for all the hours that we have spent on this, as well as the borough staff and our solicitor, and also to members of the community, because we've heard from many of you. In fact, in the last two weeks, I would say that the flurry of materials that we've received from the people in the community in terms of, from both sides, in terms of emails and voicemails and phone calls and letters to the editor, were seen and heard. I felt, and I have been, when I go out for walks every day, I argue both sides of this. It's a complicated issue. Zoning is not in my wheelhouse, so I look to the, I do look to the professionals for their expertise. And I know that on our borough planning, we've got someone who actually has an advanced degree in planning, and so there are other experts out there. So I kind of weighed this back and forth, and today I kind of had this aha moment. I thought, well, maybe this is preparing me for my high school debate championship that I never got to go to for illness, because I feel like I could argue one side very strongly, and then, you know, the next breath, turn around and argue the other side as well. It's there. I mean, I, we all live in the borough. We love this town. Some of us have had kids go through the schools. You know, we also shop. You know, we all try to shop locally, especially during the holidays. We encourage people to. So, so we need, you know, we need the local residents, we need the shopkeepers, we need the historical venues, and, and it's not been easy. It's been really, it's been complicated and very layered. We've had, we've heard from, you know, business people, we've heard from local residents, we've heard from our own economic arm of the borough, which is Main Street Gettysburg, in terms of looking at this from a visionary standpoint. And I guess one thing I want to just say to kind of go off of my colleague, Mr. Moon, said, and that is that I'm very proud to serve on this council with my six other colleagues, because the business does take place here. We are very transparent. We may not always agree. In fact, over the weekend, several of us received an email that was pretty accusatory and really kind of took us to task for even having a 4-3 split vote. And I thought to myself, well, first of all, they indicated that this was the first time we'd ever, that this council has ever had a 4-3 vote, and that's not true. Budgets have been 4-3 votes. The open container has been a 4-3 vote. The open container has been a four-three vote. A couple of years ago, how tall buildings should be in the center of the downtown. So we don't always agree, but we hold each other in high regard and respect, and that's the one thing that I really appreciate most about this council and my colleagues. If you look at the four-three vote, even though we're a small town, so, you know, where does partisanship play? But it's split right down the middle in that as well. And so when I look at a four-three vote, I say, that's democracy in a small town at work, and that's what we want. We don't always agree. In fact, I think people should be scratching their heads if we're always a seven-zero vote. I think that's, you know, that would say something about us. So I did want to address that, because the, the one message we received was, was kind of accusing council for having that split vote. The last two weeks, we've heard, as I said, from many of you, this weekend, things were really ratcheted up. I probably heard from about eight or nine people. One was a businessperson and the rest were residents. I came away at one point on one of my walks, actually thinking, okay, we need to, and after, we, we weren't aware that the planning, that the borough planning was going to be meeting until after they met, or at least I didn't. I think some of you did not either. So we heard from Mr. Strauss. So that got me thinking, you know, what was he saying? Then we look at the document, the report from the county planning, which, you know, their summary is pretty, is pretty on point there. And so I just feel like, you know, back and forth, back and forth with all this. We also have hired a consultant, Michael Baker, to look at our zoning. And I know I will be, people on both sides would, would be upset if I said, you know, maybe we should think about waiting until we get into that zoning, to look at all of the zoning. We're paying him as a consultant. Do we hold off and wait? So these are some of the thoughts that have been going in my mind, back and forth. Today, I'm standing in line at the bank, inside, actually, kind of old school, because I had some transaction things to do, and I got a phone call. And I, I did tell her, because she asked if I would mention that in this meeting. I heard from Peggy Reinhardt at 228 South Washington Street. She couldn't be here this evening because she has grandchildren, she was babysitting. She owns that house right there. And I said, well, can I call you back in a few minutes? And she said, yeah. And so I called her back as I was driving from my bank, and I just thought, I'm just gonna, I have walked by the, the property on High Street dozens of times. I've driven by. I have seen the for sale sign and wondered about that and trying to keep personal issues out of all of these decisions and kind of look at things at 40,000 feet. But I, I actually talked, talking to Peggy Reinhardt on the phone, and I pulled into the alley, and she said, are you in a, in a white van? I said, yeah. She said, I can see you in my window. And then she ran out into the backyard, and so we had, I had my dogs, she had her dogs in the yard, and so they're yappy dachshunds, so we couldn't hear. So we're still on the phone talking, and I'm in the alley. And she said, I just want you to know, she said that I support this special event venue. She said, I'm, I'm supportive of it. And I looked, and that little alley, five feet or whatever our alleys are, I'm not sure, is it five, about five feet? Twelve? Okay. I have a inflated sense of myself, I guess, I thought. But anyway, her house is actually closer than the, to, to the home than the other neighbors who are on the other side, and I can appreciate and respect what, what you're saying about concern about noise and, and, and I had the same thoughts you did, 500 people going through, hmm. But there were no tents up, there were no porta potties. And so that's a different, you know, it's, it's not misleading, but it's, it's just definitely different than what we were led to believe, maybe those 500 people coming through. But Peggy Reinhardt had no problem with having this outdoor venue. She owns her property. She said, I, their Englishes are good neighbors. I said, you could have buses coming right up here to drop people off. She goes, that, that doesn't, that wouldn't bother me. She babysits her grandkids a lot, so there'd be that noise, but she wasn't concerned about it. She said, I'm, I'm sure that, you know, if this went through and the events were held, that they would be respectful, and if we had concerns or complaints as neighbors, they would be addressed. So I thanked her on the phone, hung up, waved, and drove away, thinking, I'm just going back and forth here. I usually consider myself a pretty decisive person, but I feel like I've been on both sides, trying to respect both the residents that live in the neighborhood as well as the opportunities in terms of, for business. And I'm just wondering, you know, should we revisit and look at the special exceptions again? Are there things that we can do that would help to try to mitigate and give people a little more confidence, yet not saying no, that we would not, we would not do that? So, I don't know, Mr. Heiser's looking.
Okay. Well, no, we can. So the, the methodology of how that would happen
Right.
Is that we would essentially be compelled to vote this down either now or at the time of enactment, either one. You would then, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Eastman, but you would need to revisit, make whatever changes they are, advertise, and hold another public hearing, and then we would again then arrive where we are currently.
Okay.
So that's essentially how that works.
I just, I hope I represented Mrs. or Peggy Reinhardt's comments, because she was pretty adamant about it. And when I looked at it, I mean, her, her yard to the English property is very, very close. If you know which house, it's beautiful, Forsythian Bloom right now. And yet, when I look at the summary of the, you know, the planning document, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough deci, it's not an easy decision. It's really not an easy decision, so.
I'd like to comment on what Patty has said. Ms. Reinhardt called me as well and pointed out that her property
Who did? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Judy. Who, who called you?
Ms. Reinhardt.
Oh, okay, okay.
Her property is separated from the English property by just the alley, and so she does have a dog in the fight. And she, as Patty has just said very well, she is definitely pro the project. She sees it as an addition to the community, as, as to the neighborhood, as bringing a vibrancy to the neighborhood, in, in her words. And she did say, in the course of our conversation, please share with your colleagues my thoughts on this. The other thing that Patty mentioned that I would like to just confirm, I had two calls today on this subject, and both of them were for the project, however, wanting it to be special exception and not by right. So that seems to be a factor in the thoughts of a lot of people, and I agree with Patty. We need more conversation, I know everyone hates to hear that, on that issue, special exception or by right.
I think people are so passionate on both sides. I think we, you know, just in terms of paying attention to hearing that, and we, and I, and as someone said, you know, this fall, things were kind of on a hiatus for a while. But I don't, I don't know, I'd be interested in what my other colleagues think about this idea as well.
Where I stand, I don't, I don't believe in it for a special exception. It's a shame that we did not peruse this, peruse an option, I don't even know if it's possible. Apparently it was possible for open container, but not possible for this, to do a pilot program. So we could see exactly what it's going to be, instead of thinking it's going to be hell and high water without even actually seeing what it's going to be. So that's a shame, because if it's, if it's something that waits until this zoning consultant, that could be a whole nother two years before something actually
Right, I, I understand that, yeah. I realize that's
But, but if it, if, if this vote today were a pilot program, we would have a year of actual reality to see what it is for the, for the zoning consultant to see as well and put into his, his or her work.
Well, actually, Mr. Carr, I, I thought of that, too, as, again, you know, thinking either side, and I actually called Carly and Charles, and then I, and we heard from, from Mr. Eastman about, about that. Because I was under the impression some months ago this winter that there was some discussion about, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought there was some discussion about looking at it and a year later revisiting, and we decided not to do that. But if that, but nowhere did we, were, were we told, oh, you can't, you can't do that at that point. Because I guess it didn't remain on the table, you know?
At one point, there was a discussion of a management plan component.
Okay.
And, and that's, I think, what you're referring to. The issue of land use, and, and Mr. Eastman can expound upon this, but once someone is permitted to undertake something, I mean, we certainly probably have land uses within the borough and, and probably every municipality does, where there are things that exist that, as zoning ordinances are updated, they would not be allowed to be created again.
Zoning by its very nature runs with the property. It's land use.
Right.
It's not personal, so therefore
Right.
People involved and so forth, as much as that seems to be discussion points, really are not, that's not an issue when it comes to this type of legislation. It deals with the property, and the concept is that, you know, if you were to make that a legal use and people relied on that, you cannot later say, well, you could amend it, but you could not for the people that have relied on that. You cannot declare it as being illegal.
Right, at that point.
That's the whole concept of
The land use, right.
Yeah.
That's what Ms. Marshall explained to me. Yeah. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
All right, I will comment. This is a, this encapsulates, really, many of the issues that we have in local politics, right? This is a political matter, not necessarily a partisan matter, but a political matter. People have to make decisions. When we, you know, refer to our experts and to our constituents, these are all pieces of input that we receive, and we have to use that to try to make decisions. With land use and with this particular circumstance, because you're dealing with an area that is an additional complexity to other underlying zones, right? We have an R2 that underlines, we have Old Town that underlines, and this is an extra layer of regulation and therefore an extra layer of complication. You're right on the border of some of those areas. In a built environment like Gettysburg, it's very difficult to deal with that. You're telling people what they can and cannot do. So I, I do want to comment that there were things that have been said, you know, that I don't think were entirely fair to the members and entirely fair to other members of the public, and I, I really found that disparaging. As we sat here for many months trying to sort this out, you know, one of the difficulties is with the number of different options, the number of different regulations, it was very difficult to try to find four people that were on the same page with a combination of those things. And that's what we have attempted to do here. So just please do understand that obviously, whether it be this evening or some other evening, people are going to leave here upset, and that'll happen, and it won't be the first time nor the last. But do understand that I think that all of your representatives here in this council have attempted to do what they think is best, and I do have faith in all of the other six colleagues that I have sitting here, that they try to do what they think is best. We're trying to address that which has been in a long storied, a long history town, which is fairly complex, and that which may be, which is very difficult to anticipate. So if there are no other questions or comments, I think I'd ask for a vote.
All right, Ms. Stull.
Mr. Berger?
Nay.
Mrs. Butterfield?
Aye.
Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
Mr. Lawver?
Aye.
Mr. Moon?
Nay.
Nay.
Mr. Heiser?
Nay.
For ye, renay.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Ms. Marshall, not related to these motions? Okay, if not, on to Ms. English.
Thank you. You have my manager's report. The Gettysburg Stormwater Authority is going to be sponsoring a rain barrel workshop that's going to be free to borough residents. That will be held on May 11th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and you must sign up. There is limited space available, and this would be part of the MS4 program's best management practices and public outreach. So it'll be a small class to start, and we're hoping to do a, a second class in the fall. That, that information, Charles just posted on the screen, and it will also be advertised in our newsletter that'll be out this April. I think in the next week to attendees, possibly. And then we have a item at the Upcycled Art Show at Waldo's downstairs. I took a satellite dish and turned it into a bird and bee bath. So it's for the Adams Rescue Mission, and it's a benefit for the homeless, so it is a silent auction, so people can bid on those items, and they'll be displayed at Waldo's until April 30th, I believe. And I have one item on there for Harb, and if you have any other questions.
Okay, so we do have motions for, for Harb and for Stormwater. Any questions from Ms. English not related to those motions? All right, if not, can we have the Harb motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, Harb, following its review on March 15th, 2023, and grant a certificate of appropriateness for the following application as presented, COA-230015, major product, project 4042 Baltimore Street, the Lincoln Building. Anita Kramer to approve the facade improvements that are consistent with the Secretary of the Interior Guidelines and the Gettysburg Design Guide as presented to the board, and the application dated March 8th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Questions and comments about the Harb motion for this month? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, and the next is a Stormwater agreement. Have that motion, please.
I'll make a motion. Oh, I just lost it. I'll make a motion to authorize the execution and delivery of an operation and maintenance agreement requiring the implementation of Stormwater best management practices for certain real property in the borough located at 138 West Broadway. Wesley Heiser, President Borough Council, and Sarah L. Stull, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, attest, and deliver the agreement on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about the Stormwater agreement? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, any further questions for Ms. English?
I do, I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Butterfield.
We discussed it today earlier, and I just wanted it in the minute. When I read the recommendation from Harb about number 40-42 Baltimore Street, there seemed to be some trepidation about wood paneling that was going to be used. Would it be smooth or grooved? And there were some questions. Apparently, that was resolved to the satisfaction of harm, and it is no longer a problem, and a new material is being investigated to, that they will consider again later. But as it stands, the little bit of a caution that appeared in the recommendation is null and void.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, on to the Parking Department. Ms. Fissell.
Good evening. You all have my report. I have the comparisons from last year to this year, as always there. The only thing I'd like to note, the LPPs, again, are probably, are record numbers. There's residents taking advantage of it, people working taking advantage of it, the college kids are using it now a lot more than they had been.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Fissell?
Not a que, well, yes, sure.
Or comments, I'm sorry.
A question and comment, both, because I promised some, some, some visitors to our town that I would, and some residents as well, that I would say something about it. Is there still a grace period for parking? Or am, did I imagine that when I first moved here, there was a grace period for parking?
There was a grace period at one time.
Is there no longer a grace period?
There has not been a grace period for
Because I ran into some very disgruntled shoppers downtown.
Probably four years, I believe it is now.
And then they were griping and they're griping, and I said, can I help you understand how to pay on the, and I should not have asked. No, I paid, and they're like, I haven't
Yeah, so when
Two minutes over. It was two minutes over, and they had shopping bags galore.
When Garma requested the three-hour limit versus the two-hour limit, council had voted there's no grace.
Interesting. I had forgotten that myself, and two weeks ago, I just paid a ticket, so, you know, but I paid it. But I paid it in time, so I didn't have the penalty.
Is that something that can be reviewed at another time? If council so chooses to get it on the agenda again?
I know, it can certainly be reviewed. I'm trying to think of the mechanism of how we did that. I suppose that was, I'd have to look if that was written to the ordinance or how it was done. Mr. Lawver, you know?
It was, it was part of the ordinance for the meters back at that time, but the meters were mechanical at that time, and there was actually a 15-minute grace period at the end. When you turn the dial the whole way around, it got added to the time, depending on whether you deposited a nickel, dime, or quarter. And so when your time ran out, red flag went up, no, yellow flag went up.
I'll remember that, yeah, okay.
And then when the grace period ended, the flag changed from yellow to red.
Anyway, we don't have to answer this right now. I just wanted to be on the record that I asked. Also, the, the, so the public knows, the ticket is $40 if you don't pay it within a week.
If, right, I pay 25, but it will go up to 40.
So that fine print is very important to read.
But it's also very easy to pay, I have to say.
Very important to read that fine print. I just, you know, I, I don't want us to, to really anger a lot of people that are coming to visit our town and, and two minutes, and they've got shopping bags galore, and they're spending money on our town. But anyway, we can revisit that another time. But I did want to just double check that there is no grace period now, and that read that fine print on that ticket, it's not $40 if you pay it in a week. Because that was pretty jarring to some folks. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, if not, we're going to Public Works. Mr. Harbaugh.
Good evening. You all should have my report. Couple highlights on my report. We started the Agility Spring Street Sweeping Program. We're out in the townships now, and we'll be back in town here probably next week to start sweeping our town streets. We needed to get the Agility done before we started our streets. Shade Tree Commission will be meeting tomorrow night to finalize the tree locations and their, their species of trees that they want to plant and place in order. Hopefully, we should be planting them by the end of April, beginning of May. Spring Brush Collection, I know it's a little early, but I'm going to mention it this month and next month. May 22nd through May 24th will be Spring Brush Collection in the town. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Harbaugh? May 22nd to May 24th, Spring Brush Collection.
I'm just going to, for clarification for the folks at home, can, can you let me know and let us know what the, the Agility Sweeping is?
So the Agility Program is, is, we, we share resources with the townships. We used to do it with PennDOT, but PennDOT backed out of the Agility Program, but we kept it with the townships. So we help each other with projects, and we share equipment and resources to complete those projects. One of our resources is our street sweeper. So we sweep, we sweep certain streets out in Cumberland Township, Strahan Township, and Mount Pleasant Township.
So the big machine?
Yeah.
The big vehicle. Great. We do, we do still have it.
Yes.
Helps us avoid rental fees, really, is what it comes down to.
Okay. Thank you. I hadn't seen it in a while. I know it's been winter, but last year I didn't see it much.
You'll soon see it in town here pretty quickly.
Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, if not, we'll go on to Mr. Clayball, the engineer.
Sir. Good evening, council. You have a copy of my written report. There are four items I want to give you updates on, two of which are motions on your agenda. I'll start with the annual Racehorse Alley Parking Garage Maintenance Project. Last month, you did authorize award to JDI Site Solutions. We did complete the contract documentation with JDI. We're looking to get a pre-construction meeting scheduled this month. I'm just talking to Robbie and Becca here on an actual start date, we're hoping for the end of this month to get started on that, on that work. Also, I give you an update on the 2023 Bridge Maintenance Project. The council budgeted $125,000 to do maintenance on the bridges. We have started that design and permitting. I'm going to be looking to get an authorization from you next month, your May meeting, to put that project out to bid. The two items on your agenda for motions or agenda are the 2023 Street Improvements Project and also a motion there for regarding the Stevens Run Channel Walls. First, I'll give you an update on the 2023 Street Improvements Project. That project actually has two components. The first component is street maintenance, that's preservation. It is chip seals along with a fog seal. So we did this project, similar to that, it's a high-performance chip seal about five years ago. It's the most efficient way of preserving your streets. And I think I need to really stress that before we go any further with the discussion is, is you can't really beat the bang for the buck. We do use a high-performance chip seal, so it's not your standard township sealing, and we do use a, what we call a griptight fog seal, is a high-set fog seal, which is, kind of locks the, the chips down on the street a little bit better than without it. But it is still a chip seal, and property owners aren't aware of that at first. They see the chips flying up on their cars whenever they, it first gets put down, and that'll happen for a week or two after this is first put down. But after a couple of weeks, once it get run, run in, it looks like a brand-new street, especially with that griptight fog seal. So that is the, the application that we're proposing again, again, just because of the cost. We're looking at under $5 per square yard to preserve a street versus $50 a square yard to replace a street. Significantly cheaper, and I can't, again, stress that enough. So that is one component of the 2023 Street Maintenance Project. And by the way, this, everything I'm telling you right now is already included in your capital improvement plan. So this was exactly as we proposed it in the capital improvement plan, with the exception of changing some of the streets that we wanted to do. I'll come back to that in a second. The other component of the project is there are crosswalks out in Steinware that are failing, and we want to replace two of those, the one in front of Tommy's Pizza and the one in front of the Dobbin House. The other one that is in the worst shape probably is on Baltimore Street, but as you know, we are working on a Baltimore Street project, so we don't want to dump our money into, to that street right now and then dig it up in, in a few years from now. So we're going to be excluding that one from the scope at this point and only doing the one in front of Tommy's and the one in front of, of the Dobbin House. The schedule is month of June through the month of August. We would start with some base repairs in the month of, of June. We would avoid that July week with the July 4th festivities and the Bike Week, and then come back in with your chip sealing in, in late July with everything. The goal to have everything complete before the college, one of the streets is, is near the college, so we had to have everything done before the freshmen come back in August. That's, that's the goal with the project. The, the borough's budget is, is close to 200,000, I think it's 202,000 exactly, that includes, that is included in your borough budget. We're going to do everything we can to try to stay within that budget. We think we have a pretty good idea of, of liquid fuels prices at this point. They've kind of started balancing out, so hopefully that stays true while we go through this bidding process over the next month. So that is the, everything for that project. Also, an update on the Stevens Run Channel Wall. This motion might look like it was something you already acted on back in December, because you acted on a very similar motion. In December, you authorized or approved a resolution for a small H2O grant through DCED for maintenance to the channel wall. That grant application, that grant process wasn't an exact fit for the project, but what is a great fit for it is the flood mitigation grant application process. So we would like to shift, it's both in-house and DCED. We'd like to shift from the H2O to the flood mitigation grant. It's a fairly easy thing to do, but we need to have a new resolution adopted that goes with that project. So it's just an administrative process here, basically something that you've already authorized back in December. We need to kind of re-circle back. I did want to mention one other thing about the channel walls is specifically Bream Alley Channel Wall. Anybody that was sitting at Stormwater Authority Meeting or paying attention to Stormwater Authority Meetings, Bream Alley Channel Wall is one of those walls that is failing, and Gettysburg Municipal Authority is also putting the new sewer interceptor down Bream Alley. So we are going to tag-team that project with Municipal Authority. The, the idea right now is about a one-third, two-thirds split, so the Stormwater Authority would pay about two-thirds of the, of the cost of that Bream Alley wall, and the Gettysburg Municipal Authority would pay about one-third of the cost of that wall. So we had some meetings with them, and we're hoping their board will agree to that arrangement. We think it's a, a really good, fair, and equitable way of breaking this project down and make it efficient for all of the residents in the borough who are paying for Stormwater Authority bills or Municipal Authority bills, one way or the other. So I just wanted to mention that little component of the Bream Alley Channel Wall. And of course, if we get this H2O, or not H2O, if we get the flood mitigation grant that's on your motion, a motion for your agenda, then the cost of that wall will be mostly paid for through DCED. So fingers crossed on that. So that is it for me, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Clayball?
The sidewalks that you mentioned by Tommy's and Dobbin are lighted pedestrian crossings?
So they're not anymore. Once upon a time, the one in front of Dobbin's was a light, had the, the lights actually in the street, but those were removed a few years ago, probably four or five years ago.
So they're not like the ones by Mr. G's?
No.
Which aren't lit?
No. Yep. Right. The ones in Dobbin, in, in front of Dobbin were in the street. You can still see the pavement that was removed. There's little circles along, and, and those patches will be replaced with this project, but those lights that were in the street were just ridiculously expensive. They were getting hit by snowplows all the time and getting knocked out, and we were constantly replacing them, and it just, it was not a good, a good product. So we abandoned that. It might have been five years ago at this point. So at this point, there is no plan to replace those in-street lighting, which is, again, is different than what you're just, I'm talking about at Mr. G's. There's the RRFBs, the Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacons that are up on the post.
They're not in the, embedded in the street as well?
Not embedded in the street.
They, they used to be, they used to be embedded in the street, and they were ripped out, and so we took them out as well and put.
So these two at Tommy's and, and Dobbin won't have either?
They won't have either.
The sign or the street?
Tommy's never did. It's, that's an intersection. It never had flashing.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Tommy's is right, right, what Robbie's saying is it's right at the traffic signal there. So the traffic signal itself is what stops the traffic.
It has pedestrian signals on.
It's got pedestrian signals.
Thank, that's what I, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Lawver?
The chip seal program, that was from Washington Street down to West Street on West High Street about five years ago. For anybody who wants to go out and see what the street looks like.
Yep. It also included High Street from, from Baltimore down to Howard Avenue. But now, Company of Gas has repaid from West Street to Baltimore Street, but from West Street down to Howard Avenue is still the chip seal.
Yeah. And if you look at that piece of, of High Street that Robbie just described, it's in really good shape. It looks like a brand-new road still, years after it was done. So it's a really good product.
There are questions or comments before we move on to the motions? All right, if not, can we have the Street Improvement Project motion, please?
I'll make a motion to authorize the Borough Engineer to advertise the 2023 Street Improvements Project for construction bids.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments about the Street Improvement Project? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, and the Flood Mitigation Program?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution requesting a flood mitigation program grant of $424,994 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Stevens Run Channel Wall rehabilitation and to designate Charles R. Gable, Borough Manager, and Chad Clayball, Borough Engineer, as the official, officials to execute all documents and agreements between the borough and the Commonwealth Financing Authority and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second there, Mr. Lawver? Questions or comments about this application?
When would we hear about the?
Good question.
We're here in July-ish.
Okay.
So hopefully, I have something reporting July, some good news. If not, August.
So this is a section that literally supports our alley.
Yeah.
And we're in a spot where we're not sure how badly it would be damaged with GMA's work, but we're pretty sure it would be damaged. So it's just the right thing to do, all the same ratepayers and taxpayers, get it all done at one moment, try to be efficient about it. In fact, GMA will be doing the bidding portion of it to keep it efficient. All right, any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Clayball? All right, if not, Chief Glennie, sir.
Good evening. I have my report. I concentrate mostly, I guess, this week on recruiting efforts for this, this month. We've been, the mayor and I and several of the officers have been spending a significant amount of time on the recruiting effort for the upcoming test. The day after council approved the new regulations and it was announced, we had, we sent a last email out to 15 people who what I call pre, pre-applied, they wanted to know that it was open and come back. We sent about 15 emails out that day to folks. I've heard back from some. The mayor, Officer Wundrick, and I did a recruiting visit to Hack, it's Police Academy, and we spoke to five individuals. One of them, Ken, he's not interested, they're not going to move, and I believe I put that in the report. I've had, followed up the next day with, with the four of them that, that did show some interest with a personal email. Talked to one of them on the phone. His, his question was, how do I submit my application? Do I have to bring it? Or can I mail it? And we worked through that. And that, for those watching, if they're interested in applying, they can be mailed as long as they're here by the 28th. They, they don't have to bring them here in person. And, and if you get them to the Police Department or HR, we'll make sure they all get to the proper place that, that they have to go. So I know that, that one of those individuals is definitely applying, but we created a QR code that takes you right to the recruiting portion of our website and put that on, in your, in your packet this week. And then I gave several of those out to officers who've taken them out to the community and put them in various businesses. Don't know which ones. If you're a business owner watching, you want one to set up, please let me know, because I'll be more than happy to print you one out. If you want to see what they look like, there's one out in the lobby as you walk in. And like I said, it'll take you right to the recruiting portion of our website, and at the bottom, it has all of the, the application materials, the announcements, the dates, and, and everything is right there contained on the website. I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have. Mr. Lawver, your answers, no, none?
Alongside I. The changes we've made, do you feel that this is going to help with recruiting? I mean, we all want it to help with recruiting. Question is, what's it look like?
I believe so, and, and frankly, some of the questions we got when we were at Hack, well, from almost all of those candidates, were, will you reimburse us for the academy? So I, I did some digging, I called MOPAC. It looks like if we hire those folks that are in the academy now, the state will reimburse us the 75% of the tuition that they reimburse us anytime. So if we, if we pick up those folks that are in the academy now, we can get them their money back for prepaying for that academy. It's just a process we'd have to go through, it looks like. They, some of them, they asked if we could repay their, pay them time, and I said, well, that we can't do. We can pay from date of hire on, because we'll get reimbursed 45% of that, and obviously, if we've hired you, we'll pay for that. But, so, and there's, we found out there's a lot of agencies out there that have some significant hiring bonuses that are being offered. But I, I think, the short answer to your question is, it, it definitely improved. I'm hoping that we get more applicants than we got last time. I'm, I'm pretty confident we will. And, you know, we're, we're hiring two folks, and I think that means, that, that's a big plus to some of these people, because I think when they look at it, it, it kind of helps offset some other, some other things. So I have, and again, I talked about the, the handshake app. I've reached out, we have, it has been sent out through this handshake application, which is an application that is used by apparently all the career. which is an application that is used by apparently all the career placement officers at colleges now. Some of them won't even let you advertise there unless you use the handshake. And so I tried to find colleges within a two-hour radius of us that had criminal justice or similar programs. So, and the short version of that is, we are at, we are posted at 20 colleges or universities that have criminal justice or similar programs within a two-hour radius of the borough. So I'm, I'm hoping we see 10 people for testing. That's my honest hope. So I guess time will tell, but we are getting some positive response. But I don't, as far as I know, I don't know if there's been any applications turned in yet. But we've sent out, I know 20 people have access to the application, at least from the Police Department. And I believe that HR has talked to a few as well, so.
Well, it's definitely not just our problem. On a recent, very recent trip to Baltimore, there were two big billboards advertising, one for a police officer and one for a deputy sheriff. So I mean, I don't ever recall my lifetime seeing positions for law enforcement being advertised on billboards.
Yeah, we wanted to go that route.
We almost did. I know we talked about it, but.
Yeah, the, the, the length of our process this time just kind of precluded that. But if you travel between here and Chambersburg, you'll see one along 30.
I did hear about that one.
And so it.
I think there's one between Gettysburg and New Oxford, two coming westbound.
I, yeah, if, if for some reason that this testing date doesn't pan out like we want it to, I think we'll have to, we'll go that route, and I'll come to council and discuss some other things that I've, you know, run across. And some of these other questions or concerns that are being expressed that we're hearing.
Yeah, it'd be interesting if those departments felt that the billboard advertising helped.
I believe, the mayor and I spoke with the chief in Chambersburg. And Chief Camacho really feels that the billboards have been a plus for his recruiting efforts. At least that's the message I wanted to give.
Well, if this current application period doesn't work out for us, we'll try again. If it doesn't work out, it won't be for lack of trying. And you've been proactive, you've been flexible. The rest of this team has worked hard to help try to get this done for you. We want to see you get these folks, so.
I certainly appreciate the efforts that have been put forth into changing the regulations. And I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the mayor on recruiting trips. She's, she'll go out and grab people. Come on, you want to look at us. And she's, she's been very well-versed, and she's, she's been a great help in this recruiting.
Yeah, and thank you both for everything you've done with that. It's been a difficult balance, the, the reason, so, well, to start with, if you would like to be a police officer in Gettysburg, or if you know someone who would, April 28th is the cutoff for the applications. And the reason that we had to do that is because we had to get the testing done in time that we could put officers, potentially cadets, I should say, into an academy on the 5th of July.
Yeah, with a mandatory meeting June 24th.
With a mandatory meeting June 24th. And so, you know, it's not always the easiest thing to accomplish in terms of making the timeline work. It would be nice to have a little longer to advertise, but we're going to get everything done that we must in order to run the testing process and hopefully get some people hired. But it certainly is a learning curve for us. It's the first time we've tested non-certified individuals in at least a decade. And it is an effort to widen the pool and really just get people in here. In the time that I've been on the Civil Service Commission, we've never had probably more than three or four at most ever get through the process. So hopefully, this will give us the opportunity to get officers onto the force.
Yeah, well, 10 doesn't seem like a big number compared to what we've been getting. It's, you know, three times.
Yep.
Or better. So I mean, it's, that's a big number.
And I would ask the council, something we probably should discuss, probably at the work session, maybe briefly, because the amount of money, I don't want to minimize it. But as the chief mentioned, when they were at recruiting fairs, several other municipalities are reimbursing those applicants the cost they just expended to go through the academy. And it's probably a conversation we should have if we would do that. The cost of the borough, I would estimate, would be less than $2,000, because 75% would be covered by the grant. So if that's what we want to do, I think Mr. Moon shares my sentiments. We've worked through a lot of this, where we kind of need to go and do everything that's reasonable to be done to get police officers hired here in the borough. So we're going to, we can discuss that here at the end of the month, but just think about that, if you would expend up to that amount. Because we do have the potential, it's not usually a lot of people, but there are usually people in the academy that have self-paid to get through. Many of them, I think, chief, it's fair to say the vast majority are there as sponsored candidates.
Yeah.
Through an agency, such as we would be doing.
Any other, or any questions or comments for Chief Glenny?
I just have a question on the Bike Patrol. When you, when you write in the report, the two bikes that have just been purchased a great deal, through a great deal, great deal from Gettysburg Bicycle, they were paid for by money remaining in the previous Wellspan donation and contributions from community members. Previous Wellspan donation meaning there was a previous Wellspan donation specifically for the bikes?
No. There's a, there was a previous donation by Wellspan of $20,000 for community relations, crime prevention, training, and equipment.
Gotcha.
And that's been hanging in there since I've been here, that, that donation's been here. It predates me. And we use, and we've been chipping away at that money for trainings and other things since I've been here. And there was a little bit more than enough in there to cover the bikes, probably not all the equipment. So we reached out to, to a number of folks and, and as I put in the, as I put in the.
As I mentioned last month, Wellspan's been very generous again.
Yes, and Wellspan did, just so everyone knows, renew their, their donation for, for the training, for all portions, and to purchase some of the things for the new officers coming on duty, more specifically, the new portable radios that each officer's issued. And the reason that that's an important thing, if I haven't said it before, not that any amount of money is, is not important, but those radios are about $7,000 each. So that's, you know, between $13,000, $14,000 of the donation that Wellspan gave us is for purchasing those two new portable radios. So we're really happy with that.
Are the bikes out?
Bikes are out. As I put in, they haven't been out a whole lot yet. It's just now starting to get warm enough. But patrol, or first, patrol officer first class Clunk just completed the International Police Mountain Bike Association Police Bicycle Course. So I PIBA for short, if you can say that. And we're still receiving checks, and I hope to probably report out the, the number of people that donated and the specific names. I put a few in the bulletin this week, but I'd like to announce them all at once if I can. So.
How many bikes do you want?
What's that?
How many bikes do you want?
Well, we got two for, for the guys that are on them. And it's, I don't think it's so much bikes as officers to put on them. Yeah, because it's, and what I'm, what I'm really looking for now, I'll just throw this out here, but is, I'm trying to get a little more money donated and looking for some, some outside, maybe some private grant funding, because I'd like to put additional Bike Patrol, Foot Patrol, and Mounted Patrol if I can, because we, you know, COVID, as with so many governmental institutions, the police department really took a hit, because when you, I heard it put once that it's, you know, every interaction with the public is like a deposit withdrawal in a trust bank. So when you limit the number of positive interactions you have, because you're trying to limit contact with folks, as we did with COVID, when you're just making withdrawals and you're not doing a lot of deposits, that balance goes way down. And community-oriented policing is so much getting out and talking to the public. So I'm trying to get extra patrols funded a couple of times a week of bikes, Foot Patrol, because, you know, people love to see the police on bikes, they love to see them on foot, they love the horses. So if we can get them out a couple of times a week for, you know, three or four-hour blocks over and above normal patrol, and start talking to folks and engaging, and just, just building that, you know, the trust back up, if you will. And I think that's very important. So that's, that's part of what we're working on now with funding. And I have a few more meetings to attend. I met with Steiner Bid, with Mrs. Butterfield, I think we talked about that. And so.
And that's part of bringing these officers on, is.
Yes.
You know, we've been in a situation where we, we were able to get the shift schedule filled over a series of years, working towards getting the shift schedule filled. We achieved that, and then now it's to the point where, okay, now you can put somebody out on a bike, and you don't have to be dependent upon that person being in a car.
Yeah.
Or put somebody out on foot, where you don't have to depend upon them backing someone up.
It's much easier, it's much easier to approach somebody if they're not, you know, driving by, if they're on a bicycle, or they're walking, or things like that. And we just pointed out, I forgot to mention, I'm meeting with, or I should say, we are going to attend the Karma Meeting on Thursday with the same request we took to the bid. So it's, it's a work in progress, and between that and recruiting, it's pretty busy in there.
I think the more, and I've said this to you privately as well, the more public, the more visual presence we see of our officers, the better for our town. And I think for tourists and residents, I love that we have the bikes. I want to see them on foot, I want to see them on the bikes. And where can those that want to donate toward Bike Patrol donate to Gettysburg Police Department and put Bike Patrol on the memo?
Bike Patrol or community?
It's not just the bikes, it's the training as well.
Yeah. If, if they just put, you know, the Community Oriented Policing Initiative or something in that memo, then we can direct it to the right place.
If you have not already, put that on your, on the Police Department Facebook page. That can get, that can be shared everywhere, that can be very helpful. Thank you.
Does that go into the regular borough?
Yeah, to clarify, if you're writing a check, you want to write to the borough of Gettysburg and designated Community Oriented Policing. Yeah, there's, that's what's going to be on the bank account.
I had a question about the Mounted Patrol, just because we don't, we don't own the horses. How much does that cost us to run, when we put out a Mounted Patrol?
Just the officer's time.
So they don't, whoever, they're donating the horse's time, and we don't have to?
They donate everything except the officer.
Okay, and they'll shuttle them in and everything? I would imagine you use that probably for larger, larger groups where you're more crowd-controlled. That's when they usually use the Mounted Police?
They're more just special event-related.
Right, or PR thing.
You know, they're more ceremonial than anything else. I mean, they do provide a security function for these special events, but it's, you know, we've, we try to get them out. And as I said, the folks I love, from two to 100, people just love to see the horses. They love to pet them, they love to walk up to them. It's, it's, it's a great conversation starter, if you will.
And I'd love to see them out, just in terms of Foot Patrol, because, you know, where we're located here, just simply going down Stratton Street and turning left in York, and, you know, you can do a sweep in 20 minutes. And I think that's really important.
That's the thing, too, you know, these, these Foot Patrols, Bike Patrols, Mounted Patrols will be through neighborhoods, business districts, and things like that. And they'll be, you know, they'll be designated areas they're going those days. And, you know, it's not going to be just riding up and down the main drag and calling it a day. So that's, that's where we're going with that, or trying to go with that.
Any other questions or comments for the chief? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the officer, the manager, and treasurer. Ms. Stoll, Mr. Gable?
I don't have anything to add, other than the motions that are on the agenda.
Okay.
Historically, the month of March has been our break-even point. From a budgetary perspective, revenue versus expense year-to-date, that is no different this year. As we begin to collect spring taxes, the borough is currently running a $20,000 surplus for the year. That's typical, we were running a $200,000 deficit. That's typical for January and February. With respect to the borough's liquid cash, there's just under $2 million in the checking account. And I wanted to highlight, we watch our parking and pillow tax numbers very closely. We gauge those as an indicator of economic activity in the borough. Again, in February 2023, the borough has received yet another record high in pillow tax collections at $8,900. Obviously, that goes up as we get into the warmer months, but for historical purposes, February's compared to previous years, I have a graph of that here. You can see that $8,900 is a record as compared to years 2014 through 2022. So, all good news. With respect to the motions on the agenda, there are a good number of them that do not appear on your manager's report, and that is because there was a flurry of activity in Wednesday and Thursday of last week, which occurred subsequent to my filing my report. So for simplistic purposes, I think we should just do a motion, and then staff can explain the motions that are not in the manager's report for you.
Yeah, that's fine, then we can have a time for other, you know, questions at the conclusion. All right, so let's start with our bills and payrolls.
Make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions or comments related to the bills or payrolls? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us on to the tax exoneration.
I'll make a motion to accept the J.P. Harris Associates Tax Exoneration Report for tax year 2014 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Again, we don't exonerate tax in these current years, because our collector no longer does that, but J.P. Harris does retroactively. Any questions or comments about the tax exoneration? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the COLA for Pensioner Staley.
I'll make a motion to authorize a COLA increase for retired police pensioner Craig Staley to be paid from the Police Pension Plan effective March 1st, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Again, these correspond with their employment anniversary date. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to the CDBG Administration Agreement.
I'll make a motion authorizing the borough of Gettysburg to enter into a cooperation agreement with the County of Adams for the fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Administration. Rita C. Freeling, Gettysburg Borough Mayor, Wesley K. Heiser, President of Borough Council, Charles R. Gabel, MPA Borough Manager, and Sarah L. Stoll, Assistant Borough Manager-Secretary, are hereby authorized to execute the cooperation agreement on behalf of the borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is an agreement between the county and the borough. Because the borough's economic status, we are an entitlement community, and the county administers the program on our behalf. Any questions or comments about the CDBG agreement? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, takes us to the reappointment to the HRC.
I'll make a. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing Janelle Wurzberger as a member of the Gettysburg Borough Human Relations Commission for a five-year term of office, retiring on April 15th, 2028.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. These were staggered terms when the Human Relations Commission was created, and so this is a reappointment of a member. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just want to, as I always do, extend gratitude to the members of our community, whose staff, our 10 authorities, boards, and commissions, and most especially to people who renew those terms and agree to serve again. Our government could not function without members of the community willing to step forward and gift some of their time, as Ms. Wurzberger has done here for the Human Relations Commission. If anybody is interested in any of our 10 authorities, boards, or commissions, they can contact me or Mrs. Butterfield to talk about them.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us to our PSAB delegate.
Make a motion to appoint Judith Butterfield as a voting delegate for the PSAB Annual Conference to be held in June.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments for the, this is the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs. Thank you, Ms. Butterfield, for attending. Okay. If no questions or comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that takes us to our, well, not our, but to the Sycamore Tree. Be clear about that.
Yeah, the next two motions are actually related. Chad, you did a really great job of summarizing this at Stormwater. Would you care to?
Yeah, I think you're probably also doing it.
Commentary.
Sure. Yeah, so, and the reason why Charles mentioned the Stormwater Authority is because there are a few entities at play here. There is a Sycamore Tree that has been reviewed by a certified arborist. It's at the intersection of. by a certified arborist. It's at the intersection of Mayor and Court Alley. The sycamore tree is badly in need of being taken down. More than 50% of the cross-sectional area of that sycamore tree is gone. Also, the roots from that sycamore tree are badly eroded from the stream, which is why the Stormwater Authority is involved in the project. That sycamore tree is currently on private property, but the private property, piece of private property that resides on is also a piece where the alley and our guide rail for our bridge sit. Every year, we do bridge maintenance. Earlier in my report, I've mentioned that we're going to be doing some bridge maintenance. We are looking to do bridge maintenance to that guide rail and that, that bridge over Court Alley. In order for us to complete that bridge work, we need a right of way from the property owner. This is one of these situations where there's kind of a perfect marriage here between property owner and the Borough and the Stormwater Authority, where if we come together, we can get this project done. We need the right of way from the property owner to get our job done with the bridge. It's, would be otherwise his responsibility to take down a tree. And the Stormwater Authority's interested in getting erosion stopped, because if we don't stop the erosion, eventually that erosion will tear into our alley and Mayor Alley will be gone. So our, our staff got together. What our hopes are here is that there's an MOU that was written and it was provided in your packet, that the three parties that I just described, the Borough, the property owner and the Stormwater Authority, can mutually work together on the project so that we can get our easement and our right of way from the property owner. And then in exchange, we would take down the tree as part of our project with the bridge work and the stream erosion. So we did meet with the property owner and he seemed to be happy with what we were proposing. And I just actually got a response, an email from him. His one question was about the area. So I think he's still going to be okay with, with the MOU as written. But I think that's the skinny of the project. I think the only other thing that I would, I'd like to add, and I'm not sure, Charles or maybe Harry, if this is an appropriate time to, so the tree in question is an imminent failure. It's a very large sycamore tree. If this thing fails before we get to it, we're endangering life. It's a pretty significantly sized tree. And that's reflected in the arborist's report. He won't even have his guy climb the tree to limit. It's all going to be taken down by a crane. So we want, we want to try to make an efficient decision on at least taking this tree down. So we would like to, whatever decisions made tonight, that we can move forward with that, that component of this project. The Stormwater Authority was also okay with that, but they threw in the caveat in their motion that they would like the solicitor to take a look at the MOU that was drafted. He has a couple of, I think, their more administrative type edits that he would like to provide. We also are waiting for final signature from Mr. O'Shea, the property owner. So he may have some administrative type edits to the document as well. I'm not sure if there's a way to modify the motion so that it's contingent on satisfaction by all parties and authorizing maybe the manager.
That's what I was going to suggest. Yeah, we had this in the Stormwater Authority. Mr. Boy recommended that they authorized Mr. Malawiki to execute the agreement, subject to review of the solicitor. And I would suggest that in this circumstance, that we do the same thing with Mr. Gable, if that's permissible. Sound okay?
Sounds fine to me.
Okay. So when we get to that second motion, I'll, I'll read that one and then someone can make it.
I had a question. Do we know if that's a witness tree at all, by any chance?
It is not. I asked that very question.
Because I was thinking that would be sold.
Because that would present a whole other, that would be a whole other set of problems.
Or it could be revenue, a revenue tree.
We, we do estimate the tree about 140 years.
Oh, okay.
So it's close.
Okay.
To being a witness tree, but not quite.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
I would also add to Chad's comments that the Shade Tree Commission is the, the body that looks at trees throughout the Borough and makes these determinations. So they, they can, concurred with the arborist's recommendation that there is imminent danger with this tree. And so the Shade Tree Commission met in a special meeting last week and formally recommended the tree be removed with haste. My word haste, not theirs.
Can we, any questions before we have the first motion? Mrs. Butterfield?
On the subject of trees, drove by Lincoln Cemetery. It was a huge tree down in the cemetery. I asked Robbie how that had gone. And because the, the root ball is so large, I couldn't imagine that there wasn't a lot of disruption. But we were very fortunate, according to Robbie, that, but my point is, a tree that size could wreak a lot of damage. And we probably are very wise to look at taking it down.
What happens to the tree after it's taken down? I know it's diseased, but can it at least be broken up into burn piles somewhere?
Firewood.
Firewood somewhere? What happens to it after it's taken down?
So it will be logged out, the trunk will be logged out and taken out with a crane. And that will be the tree company's responsibility to take care of that. So they will take that. The branches will be recycled, they'll be, they'll be grinded up and recycled.
That's the word I want to use.
They run the branches through their tree chipper.
Recycle. Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Yep.
To remove a diseased and compromised sycamore tree for public safety and welfare purposes from certain real property located at 445 Baltimore Street owned by O'Shea Rentals Unlimited, Inc., as recommended by the Shade Tree Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the removal of the tree. Any further questions or comments? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'll read the second motion, sir. I'm going to modify it before the words the, all right, before the memorandum of understanding. So read, a motion to authorize Charles Gable, Borough Manager, upon review of the Borough Solicitor, to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Borough of Gettysburg, O'Shea Rentals Unlimited Incorporated, and the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority to remove a sycamore tree, remediate stream bed erosion, provide for bridge maintenance, and to obtain right of way necessary to complete the work at 445 Baltimore Street with the responsibilities of each being articulated in the memorandum of understanding.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. And can we make sure, Charles can make sure that Harry gets a copy of that?
Yes. It's hard to review without, details, details.
This is one of the things we noticed. So Mr. Eastman doesn't get our full packets. Candidly, I don't want to pay him to review our full packets of information each month. But it does create that circumstance occasionally. Any questions or comments about the MOU? This kind of gives the latitude for the Stormwater Authority to make revisions if needed for the property owner, and they can come to an agreement. All right. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so get the tree removed. That takes us to the FLAP grant motion. Someone can make that.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the entry into Federal Lands Access Program FLAP Grant Cooperative Funding Agreement with the Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority, doing business as Rabbit Transit and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, relative to the funding of the construction of the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project, and further authorizing the entry into any reimbursement agreements and related documentation as required by PennDOT. Charles R. Gable, Borough Manager, is hereby authorized to sign, execute, and deliver any and all required documentation necessary for the grant funding of the project.
So if this seems like deja vu, it is.
We're dealing with the state government.
Council's already passed a resolution very similar to this. The, the difference being, the solicitor at PennDOT rejected the last motion because there was an inconsistency between the authorized signers and the person that actually has access to the reimbursement agreement online with PennDOT.
Yeah, the way this is phrased would lead you to believe that someone's signing a document, putting it in an envelope and mailing it. The reality is, it's done through a digital system.
Correct.
So I was authorized to sign for it.
But he does not have access.
But I do not have access to the digital system. And so Mr. Gable has to be authorized to sign for it within the digital system.
It sounds familiar. Yeah?
Yep. And that was like, oh, great. And they basically said, well, let us know when you've updated your documents.
So it delays us probably by a month, again.
So, any questions or comments about the wonders of state government?
I don't think there was a second.
I'm sorry. Second, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, proceed with the flap. All right. Questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, any questions or comments for Andrew Gable and Ms. Stoll? Not related to these motions? Okay, if not, we go on to the liaison reports, starting with Main Street. Ms. Sellers is here, yes.
Good evening. Y'all have a copy of my report. I'm just going to highlight four items tonight. The facade improvement program is underway. We've started the first window of review will happen this week. We've opened another application window that will go through May 26th. We've had some really good responses, so we're excited to put about $50,000 worth of investment into downtown Gettysburg. We have started our spring program with, in partnership with the National Park Service to reopen the Will's House. So it's open Friday, Saturday and Sunday through the middle of June. So we're looking for volunteers. If anybody is interested in serving in this magnificent museum, please see me. We are working with Main Street America, which is the umbrella of the national organization on a rural business tools project. So we have five businesses that have volunteered to participate in this, and we're really looking forward to getting started on that. We're going to be doing some personal review of those tools. And there's going to be, the state's going to be involved with a couple of those businesses as well. And reports will go on, out later for all businesses to, to find out what the results of those were and hopefully have use of those tools, you know, for, for their businesses. And finally, the Gettysburg Welcome Center. We were invited to apply for a congressional appropriation again this year for that project. So we put in three applications with the two senators' offices and, and the House of Representatives. So we will expect word back on those construction funds, hopefully in the fall. So I appreciate everyone's efforts to write letters of support for that project, and lots more to come. I'll answer questions as you have them.
Any questions?
I may have missed it, but did you just say anything about the volunteers that were sweeping up recently?
I didn't. Thank you.
And I want to say thank you for that.
Oh, thank you.
And how do people join that effort? They contact you?
Yes, they do. From the ground up, started on April 3rd. So that's our group of volunteers that was founded, just as some background, in 1999 by Dr. Samuel Mudd at the Gettysburg College Campus. They meet every Monday morning at around 7:30 in front of the Majestic Theater. And they do an incredible job of patrolling all of our historic streets and keeping things cleaned up. So yes, please contact me if you're interested in, in joining that group. It's really a nice activity and a great way to get outside and really meet some extraordinary volunteers in our community. Yes, and thank you for thanking them, because they are an important part of how things happen downtown. Awesome.
Any other questions?
Just a note on the facade improvement grant, which I think is an incredible opportunity for many people, residents, property owners, and businesses. There seem to be on the application something regarding, which I get, getting some approval from Harb and Council. I would encourage that Harb and Council both really, even though our agendas are always packed, jam-packed full, when something does cross, we have to, those that are applying have to have things from, correct me if I'm wrong, have to have things from Harb and Council and approval of said project to go with the application to, to you.
They do. We are working, we are working with Harb.
Before we even can, before the application can even be accepted, those things have to be done.
I, I do have applications in hand that don't have those. They're incomplete at this point. So we're working with Harb to make sure that those have been applied for. It is, as a reminder, it is a reimbursement program also. So until all those things are put in, I can't put that package together to send to the state to get that reimbursement.
And matching funds have to be available.
And matching funds have to be available.
I don't, I only bring that up because I know a lot of folks may look at it like, that's just too much work.
Yes. We're happy to work with.
And may not even apply. And the point is to make our facades more beautiful.
Absolutely.
So I thank, thank you and thank Harb and the Council for working together with you on that.
Well, and, and I thank you for highlighting that, because I will work with any business that's willing to reach out, talk to me about it, and we will help them get there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right. That takes us to the Recreation Authority. Mr. Carr?
Oh, I've already talked so much today. Wanted to say to the rec, about Rec Park, April 29th, the Farmer's Market is going to open, eight to one, on Saturdays, April 29th through October. And it's opening at the Rec Park. That's a new location. Those of you that love our Adams County Farmer's Market as much as I do, it is no longer behind, over by the train station. It is now at the Rec Park, starting April 29th, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Also happening at the Rec Park, May 8th, 1:00 to 6:00 PM, is a blood drive with Central PA Blood Bank. And everyone will get a free Central PA Blood Bank umbrella. So give blood, save a life and get an umbrella. Why not? And, yeah, that's what I have for the Rec Park.
Okay. Mr. Berger, the Municipal Authority?
Yeah, GMA, the Heritage Land Tank, that's the water tank near the Giant, is getting some minor repairs to the welding of the riser pipe. So it was drained today. Hopefully, it's going to be repaired and back in service this week. The Interceptor Project, our sewer project, was brought up tonight by Mr. Claybaugh, that Stormwater Authority, the engineer in GMA met to work out the collaboration of how to, to repair that and who's going to pay for that. So be doing that in the next couple of weeks. And Andrew's well, there was a pump test. All the numbers looked good. It's a good source of water. Also, there's indication that appears to have no effect on local wells. So that process is moving forward.
Okay. The Steinware Bid, Mrs. Butterfield?
There will be not Thursday, this coming Thursday.
Okay, the Adams County Boroughs, Boroughs Association?
They met March, thank you. They met March 20th, and what they featured was the Northern Adams Regional Emergency Management Agency, and what it does for different townships and boroughs. So that was a presentation. Very interesting, very topical. They talked about train derailments. But that was it. Charles, the Borough Manager, and also Councilman Butterfield were in attendance at that meeting. I was going to say, did I forget you again? I have something to share with you. Sorry about that. Yes.
Okay, the Councils, Council of Governments, Ms. Butterfield?
Yes, this last meeting, the program was Mayor Ron Harris of Carroll Valley, who spoke on cybersecurity for municipalities. I have been appointed to the Collaboration Subcommittee for COG, and will represent that subcommittee at a cybersecurity program at the Public Library on the 12th. Also at the meeting, Representative Mao was there and spoke at length. And he, in his remarks, highlighted his work in helping to protect the Borough against properties being taken off the tax rolls and our tax base decreasing, and his efforts to minimize that. It was interesting.
Okay. Happy, Ms. Lawson?
Happy met last week. And two things. One, I shared with the Happy Board the presentation by the Borough Engineer Chad Claybaugh on the Racehorse Alley. And Happy is starting to put together information to share with Borough Council in the future. We'll let you know, we'll be in touch in terms of when they would like to present to Council. Both Tom Jolyn and Susan Nagle, who are no longer on the board, were there that evening. And as Susan Nagle reminded us, that Racehorse Alley has other components besides just beautification and making it a safe path. besides just beautification and making it a safe passageway for vehicles and pedestrians and bicyclists, but also there's a tie-in to stormwater, which was discussed a couple, several years ago, actually. So they do want to present, and we'll, you'll hear more about that. And then the other thing is Happy participated in the Wellspan Expo recently and gave away, I can't remember, like, eight or 10 child's helmets at that expo, so.
Okay, yeah, if they're gonna, if they'll be coming to talk about Racehorse Alley, just wanna make sure it's in the next few months, so it's timely.
Yep, so it'll be on the agenda.
We'll be continuing through that over the next few months.
Yep, they're gonna discuss it at their next meeting and be in touch.
ACTPO, Ms. Butterfield?
ACTPO meets quarterly, not monthly, and they will meet the 26th of this month.
Over to Awareness, Mr. Moon.
The Task Force met last month. We had a private screening of a film that we are considering presenting for the public on conventional approaches to pain management and managing the opioid epidemic in both rural and urban settings. On the 22nd of this month, we will have our annual Spring Medicine Takeback. There will be, I believe, eight to 10 locations around the county. Gettysburg's location is across the street at the Housing Authority parking lot, where we'll start at 10:00 a.m., receiving your expired or unused medications. These can be prescription, they can be over the counter, they can be creams, pills, nutritional supplements, whatever, bring it all in. We have a friendly wager going amongst members of the Task Force to see who can give out the most Narcan. I am positive it will be me. Please come over, drop off those medications you don't need, and let me give you my spiel on Narcan and take it home with you. The 22nd, this is a Saturday at 10:00 a.m., please, thank you.
Okay, Trail Feasibility, Mr. Berger?
Nothing to report.
Recycling, Ms. Butterfield?
As mentioned earlier, our cup runneth over with recyclable art in the community. As Deborah mentioned, the adult recyclable art show at Wildos, and at the Arts Council, the students, the children's show. There, they have 95 entries, it's the most we've ever had, and that's for K through 12. There's some extraordinary pieces there that you would think were done by adults and are certainly worthy of display. If you have children in your life, I recommend you take them over to visit, because children always enjoy that exhibit. Our Covered Device Event last month was successful again and much appreciated by the residents. We had approximately 50 customers. It was brutally cold, and so I made the suggestion that we change our schedule. We were locked into March and September, because when we were four times a year, that was just how it came out. But I made the suggestion to the Borough Manager that we switch that to April and early October. I think the temperature would be better. So thanks to Sarah, and Deborah, and Becca, who helped out that day, and to Robbie and Bradley for setting up, as usual, for a successful time, and Chris and Will Berger for volunteering and helping, and John Butterfield, if you're watching, for helping as well. And as long as I'm throwing out thank yous unrelated to covered devices, thank you to Patty Lawson for setting up the tour, for staff and council out at the new Historical Society building. It's really extraordinary, and everyone should make a visit out there. And finally, I've been invited by the Littlestown Senior Center to speak next week on recycling. And what's going to be a challenge about that particular presentation, Littlestown does not recycle. They do not have mandatory recycling. So I can't just list what to put in your bin. I've got to come up with some new information to share with those at the elderly center. And I was speaking to an official of Littlestown, this is interesting to me, they are 300 people below the requirement to recycle curbside. Their population is 4887, and you've gotta have 5,000 to bump that up. So the next contract go around, they have two new housing developments in Littlestown, and they will certainly be pushed over that limit, and their contract situation will be different next time. So it's always something.
I have a question about the recycled art show. I noticed that some judges were invited back this year, and other judges were not. What do you have to do to anger the Arts Council so much to not be invited back?
Well, I think.
Is that you?
It was me.
I think that if the appropriate member of the Arts Council was taken out for a hamburger Judge would be invited back.
Noted. Not really sure where to go from there.
Wow, alright, yes, thank you.
I saw that Cumberland County did a residential hazardous material take back. Any chance of that happening in Adams County or Gettysburg Borough?
We, it used to be sponsored by the county, under Bickie Redmond did our hazardous event. That went away when Bickie retired, and then the pandemic. I have asked that question of the county, and there is nothing in the works right now to do that. If we chose to do it and sponsor it, then Sarah has some contacts of companies who do that kind of thing. It's expensive to get them, and we have to be careful with very strident rules, but can be done. When we say hazardous waste, it isn't always really scary stuff. Paint, open cans of paint are considered hazardous waste.
Motor oils.
Batteries.
Yeah, batteries, just some of the insect sprays that are around in old garages and stuff. I had a person contact me about that, and they said, can we just put this in recycling bin? I'm like, no. And you can't put it in your garbage. And they said, what are we supposed to do with it? And I'm like, I don't know, but if you find out, I have a box in a garage on property of mine.
That's the problem, that's what kinda happens, you just accumulate it permanently.
Well, or you get upset, package it and put it in with the garbage, 'cause they don't open the garbage bag and look when they throw it in the truck. So I mean, I think it's something that maybe we oughta look into, and if people outside the borough wanna come in, we could charge them a small fee.
Like we do for the shredding.
Like we do for the shredding, yeah, absolutely. I mean, there's a lot of old buildings in Gettysburg, if you get into old garages and stuff, you're gonna find this stuff.
Or basements when they flood, that's always fun.
Yeah. And I mean, people, people really do, I think, wanna do the right thing with it.
Wanna do the right thing, right, you're right.
It's so difficult to do.
Where you take it, right.
Yeah, and then there's just no way to get rid of it. So I think it's something we oughta look into.
Absolutely.
For paint, DEP will allow you to, in spray cans, empty the can by spraying it onto a piece of cardboard. Empty the can, and then you can trash the empty can. For regular cans of paint, you take off the lid and add kitty litter, leave the lid off until it dries up, and then you can put it in. But with the yard stuff and others, that type of spray.
Something to think about for the future here. You have the, both the Fire Department and the Mercy Medical Services reports this month, your packets. Officials' comments, more elected officials' comments.
Chad, do you have something?
Let's start with the mayor, do you have anything?
Yes, I met with 30 students that are at Fairfield House, Fairfield High School, but they came to Gettysburg tour the battlefield today. And I went out for dinner with them at Dunlap's and gave them a welcome to the Borough Letter, and they were really happy to be here and visiting. Other than that, it's also time for parades. The Gettysburg Memorial Day Joint Veterans Committee, we have our next last meeting before Memorial Day, this Wednesday evening, and everything's selling along wonderful so far. And then also Chad Allen Carr came in, and we got the parade route together for Gay Pride Walk on June 3rd, and I think it worked out well. And we have the parade route down. And let's see if there's anything else. I'm gonna, well, we'll have a meeting before then, but I'm having, it's planned, my last meeting on campus, office hours on Gettysburg College Campus. And I made the offer, I think a police officer's gotta go with me, and any member of council who wants to join me.
When is that?
It's, I have it right here, let's see, I'll send it to you.
Please.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I appreciate that, and I told the college that I would be bringing someone, and they were more than happy to have a council member attend. I'll get that to you. Other than that, always good. And I think everybody knows, and even though it wasn't borough-related, but Senator Casey was in town this morning to announce a $200 million grant for Floyd Bay Access for Adams County.
fingers crossed.
Yeah, a few things. To, April is, go blue for April, for a couple of reasons that I know. I wanted to give a shout out to Adams County Children's Advocacy Center and their new building next to the Gettysburg Presbyterian Church, 224 Baltimore Street. Please wear blue anytime you want in April. If you have colored lights outside of your building, make them blue, or put a blue ribbon, anything blue, because for April, it is Child Abuse Prevention Month. But the other thing that I wanna bring to attention to is it's also Autism Awareness Month. And if you know me, well, you know that people with special needs are very near and dear to my heart. So you can wear blue, or make your porch light blue for both of those things. I definitely wanna give a shout out to Gettysburg Joint Veterans Memorial Day Parade Commission. They are seeking donations for the parade, and you can find them on Facebook or contact the mayor about how you could go about making a donation for our Memorial Day Parade here in Gettysburg. Thank you to the Gettysburg Joint Veterans Parade, Memorial Day Parade Commission. And I'm gonna ask for another donation, but it's not for me. Thank you to the Gettysburg Garden Club. If you haven't seen, some flowers have already started arriving. If you haven't seen the tulips on the square, they put those there. They go out there and they do all the work, knowing that the sun is coming, the sun will come out eventually, and they do a lot of work. And eventually, you're gonna, we're gonna be seeing even more, of course, as we do every summer. But it takes a lot to make all of that happen, so please, you can find them on Facebook as well, Gettysburg Garden Club, and donate to them. I would like to continue, and I plan to, feature Gettysburg nonprofits from time to time in this session, because I think it's important. We have so many, so many incredible not-for-profits that do incredible work for the borough, in the borough of Gettysburg. And I know, as, in my work as, in development and finding, fund development and working with nonprofits, donors have very specific things they like to give to. That's why I wanna make sure that we're highlighting a lot of various things, because that's what, that's one thing that makes Gettysburg a vibrant community. So if the Memorial Day is your thing, and I hope it is, you contact the Parade Commission. And if flowers are your thing, and I hope it is, contact the Gettysburg Garden Club. Both of those organizations are great, and they bring a lot to our town. That's all I got.
Ms. Butterfield?
Chris Berger and I spoke to two government classes at the high school, joining Commissioner Martin and a gentleman from the school board. And I was impressed by the students' attitude, they seemed interested, they asked good questions. But the very first question, out of, made me smile, student question. The young man said, "If someone wants to keep a dangerous animal as a pet, what steps should he take?" And of the urge to shout, "What are you thinking?" But we didn't, but it was very enjoyable. And the at-home in Adams County meeting this last time focused on transportation, which is an important factor. When you're dealing with affordable housing, it must be near public transportation and have that be handy. Rich Farr did a good job of presenting what Rabbit Transit does for the community, and Andrew Merkel represented the county planning, and he did a good informative presentation as well. It was a good day.
Chad covered it all.
Mrs. Butterfield mentioned the tour at the Adams County Historical Society, and they opened their doors officially on Saturday. So hats off to Andrew Dalton and his board, and Tim Smith did a great job with the tour. Last Monday, I attended a housing forum at the seminary, and there were people from the state there, as well as some local folks. Janet Riggs, retired Gettysburg College President, and Kirsten Bell, a local citizen who's running for council, was there to speak. So again, affordable housing is a big issue, and an important one, so.
Mr. Berger? Okay.
President?
Yes.
It's April 27th at 11:00 a.m., if anybody else agrees with this question.
At the college, you're referring to.
A location to be determined, if you're ready.
Okay, that takes us to our second public comment period. Again, if you use the podium, please give your name and address. And please limit your comments to five minutes, public comment. Seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session.